Call of order, this State's County Board of Commissioners joint meeting with the Board of Education on Thursday, June 10th, 2021.
Thank you, thank y'all for having us, and I'd like to call the State's County Board of Education meeting to order.
As of right now, if we would, please stand for invocation, I'll ask Commissioner Menon Hall to lead.
Almighty gracious, Heavenly Father, what another wonderful day you've given us today. Father, we thank you for allowing us to carry on the business of the county. We appreciate the school system coming up today and working with us on our budget and their budget as we go through this upcoming year. And I'm very, not quite sure of the word to use, on the school system and the county in the past year with the COVID situation, but they have managed to get through this just as our county has, and we just give you all the thanks for that, Lord. Without you, it would have been impossible. Father, now, as we get ready to enter into this discussion, we thank each member of both boards for being here today, and ask for your guidance, your wisdom, and your direction. In your precious name, we pray, amen.
Please continue standing for pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I ask for the approval of the agenda. In discussion, all the favors say aye.
Aye. Will, we'll ask for a motion to approve the agenda. Thank you, there's second. Thank you, all those who favor.
Moving on to item two, the presentation of the Board of Education's budget request, our Superintendent Dr. Rice.
Well, and it also says Finance Director Ms. Moore, she is not able to be here today. I don't know the last time one of these meetings took place without Ms. Moore sitting in, so I'm going to need y'all to give us a lot of money today so she won't get on to me. But, no, she, Scotty's had some health issues, most of y'all know Scotty, and he's in the hospital this morning, going through several tests, so I asked that y'all just keep him in your thoughts and prayers. He's had a rough year and a rough week, and so please remember him. And with that being said, we'll go through our current expense budget today. You've had that now for a while now, since a little bit before the deadline, I believe, day or so before the deadline, but as you look through there, I won't go through it line by line, but if you want me to come back to it, I certainly will. We're basically looking at continuing the things that we've been doing with a little bit of cost of living expense, if you will, with whether that's salary of retirement, things like that, those projected amounts that may or may not go up with the state. As Mr. Menon Hall certainly knows, and Ms. Cox certainly knows from being with the Board of Education for years, that in some ways, this is out of order. The state has not approved a budget in several years, and so we have to go off of projections of what we think may happen, and so we're somewhat guess at these. We've tried to be conservative with those guesses, and looking at what we hear, a raise may be for staff, and of course, that's where the local positions would be an increase. So we've tried to be conservative with that, and looking at what those expenses may be. Same thing with electricity cost and what that projected increase may be, but the main things that we, those items, we would look to keep the same with those increases. But if you look through, we do have some increases by category of new request and priority order. The first one of those is two technology engineer positions at about $184,000. As you notice, we have had the same technology staff that we've had for years. When I came onboard five years ago, we had about 400 Chromebooks at North Stokes High School. Since then, we have them for every kindergartner through 12th grader as a result of COVID and all that, but we've been trying to maintain them with the same staffing. And so with the increase in technology that we've had in the last few years, especially with the COVID increase, we're looking for, to add to technology people. We're also looking at adding one maintenance position. We have some maintenance people that are getting ready to retire. Some of those are very skilled positions, like a locksmith, then, so we're looking to bring in a carpenter one position to be that apprentice, so that that could help us in our transition when that retires, we won't be trying to either have to contract out very expensive work, or try to hire someone that already has that training, so we're looking to train our own in that transition plan. We're also looking to increase the supplement from four to 5% to make us more competitive with surrounding counties. Several years ago, the county commissioners were very gracious to us in getting our supplement up to the full 4%. Staff greatly appreciates that. Again, as we look to recruit and retain our best personnel, we're looking to be more competitive with the people around us. That would be about $460,000. We also have a position that we're excited about. MTSS is the multi-tiered system of support, and that was mandated for school systems to have in compliance next school year, and we've been working toward that. Since we received that mandate, we've put that coordinator title on several people. They make it a year and quit, because they, we've added it to people that have other existing duties, and it is a workload. And so we've not been able to keep anyone in that position for more than a year, and so we're looking to add that position. But we're also looking to pair that with a grant rider. And so hopefully, that will bring in enough money to the district to offset that job description in the future. Of course, that would take a little bit, and some grants being accepted or approved in order to make that happen, but we're looking for somebody to go into that mandated role, and then, so part-time with that and part-time with the grant rider position. Then we're looking at adding two instructional coaches. We had these positions in the past that we had to cut due to previous budgets, and we're just looking to restore those to the, one at the secondary level and one at the elementary level. And then the last position, again, is one that we're excited about asking for, would be a part-time public information slash marketing position, as we constantly have new people to compete with in our, for public school, for school services, whether that's homeschool, private school, charter school. Currently, our HR director is our public information officer, but we want to get more bang for our buck with that. Again, hopefully with an increase in ADM, that would help offset those expenses in the future, but we look for somebody to come in and be able to do that part-time. We've tried to do some things with some marketing and videos, and I don't know if you've seen the recent one South Stokes has put out in the last couple of days. If you've not seen it, you can look at our school's Facebook page or South Stokes' Facebook page and see that. And they did a great job, but that one was about $1,500, $2,000. Well, if you do that for 19 schools, one person with a marketing degree could help pay, offset that expense, and you get more than a one-year product. You get continual marketing that we could work at doing with those things. So those are our new requests in addition to the normal budget that we have had in the past, and just some cost of living, if you will, type expenses, but those are our new requests. Board, would you have anything that you would like to add or expand upon?
Can I go first? I mean, they're all very much needed items, and thank you for presenting that, Dr. Rice. You know, first, I'll just say, you know, thank you to the county commissioners for always supporting our students here in the county and staff. We appreciate you. And I also want to thank our teachers, students, parents, bus drivers, cafeteria workers, and everyone, all of our staff, that has endured this past year and a half of the pandemic. You know, it's just been challenges they never thought that they would face. And so going forward, I'm hoping that that will be behind us, and we can kind of rebound and grow and just get stronger as a county. As far as these new requests and items go, there's, I don't know that I would say they're in order, definite order of need, in my opinion. I maybe would move up number six, you know, a few steps there, because that's very big right now. We did lose some, you know, ADM as far as when the mask mandates hit, you know, some parents went elsewhere for education. So I do think that marketing position is very important, like Dr. Rice said, going forward, that's much needed, and so are every other one of these listed items. They can definitely help our students, help our staff, and help keeping State's County good and successful. And thank y'all for your time today.
Yeah, well, thank y'all for having us here today, and I'd also like to thank Ms. Moore, who's not here today, and Dr. Rice, both for their work in helping us put this budget together. I do feel like that we were conservative with our budget. As the old saying goes, there's no unimportant parts. I think all parts of the budget are important. Our parts are the students and the teachers and our staff and the administration, and if we start taking parts out, then we're hurting ultimately the students. So we do feel like we've got a good budget. All the requests, the new requests, I think are important, and we just do appreciate your consideration of the budget.
Mr. Bryant?
I want to thank all y'all for having us today, too. And Dr. Rice and Ms. Moore and their staff really done a good job with this right here. They brought us a lot of stuff, and we've already weaned through a whole lot of it to get to right here, because we have a lot of needs. But one thing that's really dear to me on this budget is number three, that 5% increase. Our employees are really, really underpaid in our school system. We have hankless paperwork on our condition, making probably $20,000 less than they should be making. I know we can't give them that kind of money, but, you know, 1% will give them about $600 more in a year's time. They need that, because look what a loaf of bread and gallon of milk costs. And the other thing, the maintenance position, we really need that. We've got a guy retiring, and we've got to fill that as soon as possible, because it takes a while to learn a trade like locksmith. You don't learn that overnight. And our technology engineer position, we definitely need those, but our staff just working herself to death. And I don't see how she gets it done, what she has to work with, because she is dependent on help. And everything else on there, I don't see anything on there that I don't think that we're being conservative about, but we need more than that, but we're doing, trying to do the best that we can for what we got. And our kids deserve it. They deserve the best education that they can get, and it's our job to stick to it that they get it, and we need y'all's help, but we can't do it without you. Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
Well, first of all, I would also like to thank Mrs. Moore and Dr. Rice for putting together our budget every year, because it is certainly time-consuming, and you have to have a lot of thoughtfulness in doing it. And Mrs. Moore is very conservative, and so when she puts together the budget, she really doesn't try to pad it in any way. And I know there's several people on the county commissioner board that know that. And so all the things that we have here that we've asked for, we certainly feel like that we need that to move forward next year. Also, I'd like to thank the county commissioners and the county manager, Jay Ogley, for supporting our State's County capital outlay and current expense budget in the past few years. I also appreciate the county manager for granting our 21, 20, 22 capital outlay and current expense budget as presented. Some of the requests I feel would certainly be utmost in my mind are increasing the certified classified supplement from 4% to 5%. This request benefits all the personnel and makes our system competitive with surrounding systems our size. We really need the funds from the current expense to maintain all the personnel that we have now. We still need support for the resource officers, because the matching grant would come from our local money. So we feel like we'll get the grant, but anytime you get a grant that's matching, then we have to use that from our current money or our fund balance. I'd like to see the firefighter academy funded throughout the year. It's potentially a huge benefit to our community. I really appreciate the initial support the county commissioners have given to get this project and the idea of Mr. Rogers off the ground and running. We really appreciate you stepping forward to help us with that. I think we need additional social workers to help our students with the emotional and social needs to bridge from our schools to our families. This extra support demonstrates how much we want to help our community by helping their children while they're in school. The technology needs are always rising. We really need two additional technology engineer positions for local school monitoring and managing network needs for those Chromebooks, the smart boards, the printers, cybersecurity. These positions will give better coverage than we currently have. And lastly, I would like for the county commissioners to consider the request of two additional instructional coaches, which a lot of people know as teacher coaches this year. Our teacher coaches that present have about three schools each, and this is in this effect if I would want. Each year, we just have to maintain our numbers, but it would, and we have to usually cut that in the budget for the additional two that we request each year. But it would be very beneficial if we had two more positions. I would like to, again, thank the county commissioners for having us today and listening to our concerns, and I would like to thank you for your consideration when looking over our requests for capital outlay and current expenses.
Mr. Rogers?
Well, I guess it's down to me, and following Pat's always a bad idea, because she's always so elegant. I'm more brass tacks, so first off, thanks everybody for working together. It's been, this is my seventh one. I've sat in on several with you and Mr. Menon Hall.
Yep.
And the atmosphere now is a whole lot different from when we started. There's more collaboration, understanding, and y'all are asking questions, and that was never, or that hasn't always been the case, so just let's start by thinking that. I'll run down the list and give you the brass tacks. Technology engineer position. At one time, we had roughly 30% of our staff, or our students, when they could come back, opted to stay home. If you've ever been on hold because your computer locked up and you didn't know what to do, and 45 minutes later, somebody that couldn't understand anything you said because you couldn't understand them, you know what it would be like. And these are the engineer positions that have to help that kindergartner and their parents get that Chromebook that's been issued by the county back up online so they can continue their education. When it comes to online, if we don't offer it, somebody else will. Mr. Robertson and I, I've talked extensively, Forsyth County's got a 100% online academy. Our ADM's already at a decrease. If we can't support our technology, we might as well just give up the game, because the days of textbooks and chalkboards are dwindling quickly. Maintenance position, none of us are spring chickens, but right now, our locksmith is 67. If he decides tomorrow he doesn't want to come to work, that $43,000 becomes $50,000 to $75,000 in contracted service. So we can fill it now and keep it in-house at a better rate and know that we get priority, because if you call a locksmith now and you're brought down the side of the road, it may be two hours, it may be two days before you get somebody to come in there. So it's kind of critical, because we're talking about the kid's safety if the locks aren't properly done in our schools. Increased certified supplement, 4% to 5%. We ran the numbers, 4% was the basement, we were the only ones there. 5% is what the surrounding counties already offer. Forsyth County is 11.
Theirs is so complicated and so many different tiers, 11's the bottom of theirs, and it goes up to about 18 to 20.
So we know we can't compete with Forsyth County, but we need to hold power with Yak and Surrey, Rockingham, and Virginia. Just, but y'all had the forethought to do the salary study, to find out what's competitive. We can look at it and say, we're not. With the recent, you know, leadership change that's about to happen in central office, we realize, you know, we're not paying what we probably need to, just thinking about it. MTSS, I didn't even know what that was till I asked somebody that was doing it, and they tried to explain it to me, and I still got confused. It's another Raleigh mandate that's unfunded, and what it is, we're on, I talked to three of them, and they said it takes up 30 hours a day. So it is a very in-depth, so we decided to look at that in a grant rider position, like we did the firefighter academy. Y'all were gracious enough to see the vision and see the need and see the return on investment. That's kind of what we're doing. Mr. Rose, how many signed up for firefighter academy for next year, first semester?
We have approximately 20 for firefighter one, and then two schools, knocking on 50, one more.
So you've got 50 plus 20, so you've got 70 kids due to the investment y'all made in our kids. That's going to benefit the county for long term. The grant rider, if y'all could help us give the seed money, we feel like that $70,000 could very easily be $300,000, that we wouldn't have to come back to y'all later. We just need the MTSS assistance to get it started. And if I misspeak, y'all step right in. Like I said, this is my seventh one, instructional coach. I've been the advocate for the first previous six, that we don't need them. And then I realized, we did a survey of our people, and what's the biggest problem we've got? And every one of the smaller schools said having a cohort to assist with some of the mandates and the ways we have to teach now. You take Germantown, they have one fourth grade class, not all, one fourth grade class. King Elementary, Mountain Olive, some of the, Poppin Springs. If a fourth grade teacher has a issue with, this is new, how do I get through to this student? They're struggling. They go down the hole and they bounce it off one of the three that's there, and together they could form a collaborative team. Instructional coach is the bridge that allows us to build that bridge and add that team. Ms. Cox is, she understands the value of a teacher coach, because every Mother's Day she gets a gift from one, who does outstanding work and has rave reviews from the teachers that say, "I would have never known how to overcome this problem if I hadn't had somebody to help me." We're stretched thin, but like I said, out of, one out of seven, this is the one I picked, because I listened to the people and I saw the surveys to see what our people actually need, and being able to talk to one another is a big thing. And then public information marketing, y'all need to go to the website and look at South Stokes. My biggest ploy for this board is we have a great product, we've got to sell it. Just like y'all have an economic development, we have a academic development that we need to hire so that people know how good Stokes County is. If not, our ADM's going to continue to drop, and we're going to be in a fix in about three or four years, because we're going to have schools that aren't quite manned enough. But this is our way to get the word out how good it is, and I encourage, that one from South Stokes is dead on. The Fox Eight did one for Walnut Cove Elementary that showed what they're doing. We just need to not let everybody in surrounding areas or everybody that's looking at relocating to Stokes County to help this county grow. We need to let them know, and this is the only way we can do it, because Ms. Chelsom's trying to do HR, personnel issues, media coordinator, put up on Facebook, do this, that, and the next, and it's overwhelming. You can't do anything, you can't do three full-time jobs and get any of them right. We just need somebody to help get the word out how good we've got in Stokes County. With that, I'll quit.
Mr. Ogley, board, I'd like to ask y'all, would y'all like to talk about this one from y'all's point of view first, or would you rather us go through the capital outlay, go through that as well, and then open it up to questions?
Thank you. Go ahead and go through.
Dr. Taylor? Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to start by saying, as everyone else has, thank you to Ken Management, his staff, and the county commissioners for your assistance thus far, and thank you for having us this afternoon. What you have in front of you is a list that contains 38 items. We started this process earlier in the year, where we asked all of our principals to provide a list of their needs to us. That list, of course, was much larger than this. We broke it down as a leadership team, then went to the Board of Education. The Board of Education provided feedback, and this is the list that we compiled for you. We have listed these in priority order. I have with me leadership of the maintenance department. If you have specific questions, I will not read every, all 38 categories, but it's fairly standard, as you can see. Are there any questions with the Board of Education? I'll start there. Would you like to add, Dr. Rice, would y'all like to add anything to that brief introduction to the capital outlay budget?
I'll just say, the first several items you'll see most years are on there with emergencies, fall protection floors, those type of recurring expenses. One that we've added this year is band equipment. Band equipment, I mean, a cuba may cost $10,000, and we have looked to try to increase that as a current recurring yearly expense for those capital items as well. The other thing that I'd like to draw your attention to is number six. Many of you have been in our buildings and seen smart boards. They are getting obsolete at this point, taking a lot more repairs. The bulbs are super expensive, and so we are looking at a four-year replacement plan for that. We are having presentations right now, going through our staff with surveys to find which models they'd like to do in the future, that just the efficiency of them will pay for themselves long-term, but there is an initial cost with that. So we're looking at a four-year replacement plan with that. Some of the other items are kind of standard, but I'll let the board talk about some other items. I just wanted to highlight a couple.
We're initially saying real quick, this does, this is reflective of our five-year plan that we brought to you earlier, when you had to approve that before we could send that off to Raleigh. So this is reflective of the items that are on that five-year plan that we brought to you. Mr. Gomans, before we share, or give the floor to the Board of Education, this does highlight roofing needs, et cetera, that we've been continuing to work through as well. Board members?
Well, I mean, I think everyone can see that all these are very, you know, unfortunately higher ticket items, but much needed as far as roofs and gym floors and heating systems and monitoring systems at the school. You know, a lot of this could fall under safety. It's just, you know, aging buildings and lots and lots of needs. Like they had mentioned, we went to our principals, and they put forth what was most needed at their schools, and this list reflects it. And again, Dr. Rice pointed out a few items that, you know, could stand out as a little bit different that relates to technology. And like he also mentioned, we haven't touched band equipment in, I don't know, 40 years or something. I think it's been forever, like the money to these struggling bands does need to, you know, increase as far as if we want to keep those programs intact in other schools. Real quick, I hope it's appropriate, but I just wanted to thank Dr. Taylor for all of his hard work and time into this, and maintenance staff and everyone, and also say, you know, that we will appreciate all your hard work and wish you the best in your new endeavors, because you'll be moving, but we really appreciate everything, Dr. Taylor. If the board would like to comment on any of these items, or if the county commissioners have any, maybe just questions about some of them, maybe the why behind them, or we'd be glad to answer questions as well.
We did take a look at energy efficiency, safety, we looked at our lawn rights plan, as I mentioned, we looked at roofs. We, you will see, as we move forward in the present presentation, we are going to be able to address some of our window needs with some of the S. we are going to be able to address some of our window needs with some of the Estes money, which is God-sent to us. We have some aging buildings. We continue to be, try to be the best stewards of the money that we have available to us. We feel like the list we have presented is a sound list that is reasonable. Couple of highlights, we do have a track replacement again this year. All three of our high school tracks were in various states of disrepair. This does include a track replacement for Stokes this year. We are trying to address those things and make any plan of succession.
Is there any tracks that's still currently out of order, like not being used at all?
No, sir, to my knowledge.
Well, Chestnut Grove is not being used, but it will never be used for an official track meet due to the way that it is laid out. It looks like Darlington Raceway, which is not the way that a normal track would look. So it is not being used, but with the proximity of West Stokes. Now that it's been repaired, Chestnut Grove will have home track meets at West Stokes.
What we've kind of done was go initially under the approach. We can't fix every, every middle school has a track, but Chestnut Grove, so now you're looking at five tracks. We're at the stage now, we're just trying to get the high schools in good shape, and if we need to, we'll have the middle school track meets at the high school. And let's keep three in really good shape and leave the other ones, we have leased, in a safe condition for practice. And if you require a B U per se, it's easier to maintain three at a higher level than five. On a mediocre level.
Of course, in a pony garage, we use more X than they do. Much needed repair.
All of them are in need of repair, except for West. Now, because West is fine right now, thank you. South was, South is in progression for next year, but it was a little bit more because we're going to, so pine trees are killing the track and sap off of us. So that would require, require.
We can all, before you get into the track.
Another $100,000 plus a new, if one falls on the bleachers.
And we'll play the North Stokes Girls Track Team, just one another conference championship. So it's very much used tracks there.
And North Stokes is in disrepair, just like South Stokes is. North Stokes is also one of their primary fundraisers. They host the conference track meet repeatedly. They host the middle school contract, track meet. They host a lot of regional track meets, and that is one of their big fundraisers, is hosting track meets, which is one reason why that one has moved. It's state of disrepair, but also it's fundraising for the school. It is very important to that school as well.
Dr. Rice, would it be appropriate, Mr. Gons, did I leave anything off? Is there anything you'd like to add?
Well, one thing when you look at this list, I'd like to add, when we got all the requests from the schools, it came up just over $6.2 million.
How old was your, some of your estimates, Ricky? Was it like six months ago or anything like that?
Most of these estimates we got back in January.
You know what that does? It's, yeah. We're hoping by next January, it's going to start going down, is what we're being told, so.
I'd like to say just a little something here. I'm glad that we were able to repair West Stokes track because Chestnut Grove has not been able to have a track meet at their school even before I got on the board in 2012. And though with West Stokes at that point, had not even had a track meet there themselves for three years because their track was in such bad shape. And they used to host the EC, Special Olympics. They couldn't even do that the last year, so because the track was in such bad shape. So these high school tracks really need to be replaced or repaired because if the middle school can't host their track meet, and people say, well, not everybody, you know, takes track. Well, that's something that's offered, just like tennis and baseball and basketball. It's a sport that, you know, some children rely on. And then these track meets, each district, you know, has to host them. And so we need to keep that in repair. And it's South Stokes really needs theirs repaired. But they held back and said, you know, we'll wait another year so North Stokes can have theirs repaired. And that's kind of the way, you know, we've done. So I feel like that that is really important. And of course, roofs are important on schools because we don't want children sitting there in a leaky building. And so we'll park cave in that we don't know is going to happen. But Ricky has really been very astute in going around and making sure that things are safe. But when he brings something to us that is in need, then I feel like we all need to look at it and try to, you know, get as much repaired as we can. And so these things that we've gotten on here for capital funding requests are things we feel like that are very important and are timely now. And so we really appreciate your consideration in a funded basis possible.
Chairman, I'd like to ask, as far as I go around, that we perceive the same protocol that the Board of Education had starting with our vice chairman.
I thought you'd get some of them. I was like, you someday.
Yeah, yeah, it was. He's got the roof, make it.
Sounded just like Wayne, so there's one motion, do I have a second? Yeah, I mean, I know you brought up a good point right there about the roofs leaking and stuff. And that's one thing, if you don't fix, we know over time it's going to cause a bigger mess, which is even more expensive to fix. So, yeah, I mean, it's. I think I got one email, Dave, somebody telling me about the revenue neutral. I was saying, better not do it. But then again, I hear this all the time. I'm hearing stuff just about every day, if not every day, boy, we need more in our schools. We need more in our county, and I do agree. And of course, I think we're sitting here, but he's worth his money. But I'm going to scroll down these a little bit more, let some of the rest of the board go. If anybody else has any questions, I'll come back around back if anything else.
I don't know if you want us to stick primarily to capital.
If you got on either, or just go ahead.
But thank y'all for coming today, and I would like to say that I want to commend y'all for the job y'all have done in the last year and a half with COVID and everything. I know it was hard enough to please people before COVID, but I can only imagine how hard it was when you had parents pulling you one way, teachers pulling another. You want the kids to be in person. They want to be in person, most of them. You know, you don't want them to have to come in masks, but you didn't have a choice, you know. So that was tough, and y'all handled it very well. And I commend y'all for the job y'all have done on all of that for the past year and a half. And hopefully, things next year will ease up. And I hope it won't be as tough as it has been. And given that, one of my questions, I know Mike touched on it about the online. Is that what you think was the plan next year to have an online academy where anybody that don't want to come back into the classroom will have to just strictly be online in some sort of online academy?
We have not set up a straight online academy. One reason for that is, again, with our small schools as they are right now, if 20 or so come out of one school, and you have a school with a school number, it might drop, drop you below the funding for the principal in that building. It may force some closures. But we've not gone that direction at this time. Right now, we don't have any guidance from the state or governor as to whether or not what is required to be offered. But we have the flexibility and the ability to do that if needed in trying to create clusters of classrooms if needed. So it's not a firm answer, but we've not received firm guidance yet either. And again, hopefully, we're to the place with the vaccine and all that where people aren't asking for it as often. But we do have the technology and the skills and the experience now to make it happen if needed.
Well, that, I could definitely see in the elementary schools, that would be tough. And, and, you know, you wouldn't want to lose numbers in any of them, really. And I didn't know if it was just something with high school, middle school, or you might consider, which, you know, I'm not a big proponent of it myself. I think that kids need to be in the classroom. But, you know, I also get, we're living in different times and different, people have different concerns about things, so I didn't know how y'all would approach that or how that might affect your ADM.
In high school, we're more equipped to make it work with the virtual public school and different options that we've got there. It's easier to make that work. We can make it work, fourth grade and up if needed, if that need does arise. But the high school is a little bit easier. In the garden through third grade, to be honest, I don't know if I support it educationally. It's just, it's not an educationally sound model unless you have a special parent with you. I mean, again, if you're a former teacher and you've quit to stay home with your kids, that's a different story for that family. But just to leave a kid at home with a computer when you go to work in those early grades, it's extremely difficult to guarantee a quality education. And so there's an educational value come from another school.
Do the, looking at that band equipment request, do they, do the bands still do as much fundraising as they used to, or is that where they?
Mr. Robinson?
Is that where they typically use money from that to buy equipment? But I know, like, like you said, it's really expensive, I know that. And I do believe we funded some band equipment when Steve Shelton was on the Board of Education. I don't know if you remember that, Pat, but.
That was before me.
Yeah, yeah.
It was before me, but I actually worked with them in another location. We need them on the Board of Education.
That's true, yeah.
And so I saw him babbling on a daily basis.
Yeah, he was battling for that. I think we did include it at one time, and it might not have been the amount he wanted, but.
Well, it's so expensive, and I think you're seeing fewer people take band because the instruments, you know, they have to rent them or buy them. And, you know, people just aren't willing to afford that unless they're just musically inclined or really want for a child in band. So you're seeing that the bands are getting smaller and smaller.
I kind of noticed that.
So we really need to help them with some band equipment, I would say almost every year. Because all, right now, they're just getting a little money from each, each school just for repairs. And, you know, kids are not that protective if it's not their equipment sometimes, and they need repairs.
Or imagine your fundraising is impacted if the number of students that's taking band is decreasing, so.
Fundraising for the bands has been pretty good, but those instruments, some of those instruments are very expensive. Another thing that a lot of people don't realize and will think about is the sheet music. They have to pay the copyright fees just to play the music at concerts, marching bands. And that could be, you know, several thousand dollars a year just for the band to pay the, for the rights to use the music. So, you know, we do think it is something that, that we should give them a little bit more money every year, recurring, you know, the booster, the band boosters. And that's, I guess, different schools is maybe stronger than other schools. Middle schools is probably not, not very strong at all as far as band boosters.
No, it never has.
And Ms. Messick's right, you know, you know, there are, some students would love to play in a band, but they, their parents can't afford to go out and buy a clarinet or buy a flute or rent a flute or, you know, whatever the, you know, the instrument may be. And I think if we're going to offer the course in the school, then it's just like anything else in the school, we need to provide for it.
And also, they have these competitions in the middle school and the high school. Now, somebody has to pay for that for the children to go. Sometimes they have to spend the night, have to have, you know, of course, we provide the transportation most of the time with vans. But that takes money too, and it's not right to ask the band teacher to pay for it. And, and of course, that comes out of the fundraising money too that's set aside in their trips.
A lot of the fundraising money goes towards the marching band. Now, that is extracurricular, so the money here doesn't really go to paying the fees for the marching bands and the props and all the stuff that the marching band does. When the marching band travels, they pay for their own transportation. If the marching band goes to, if the West Stokes marching band goes to Mount Airy for the football game, they pay for their bus to go to Mount Airy. If a principal asks them to go to Mount Airy, then they pay their own way.
That's where the fundraising basically goes. This, and that's why the instrument, capital money for the instruments has been neglected. And that's why we're hoping to do a recurring. Again, if you talk a $10,000 cuba, it could take a school five years to come up with that kind of money. So this is a drop in the bucket, but it's something that is better than nothing, and we're hoping to get this started and take care of it.
And my other comment is, piggybacking on what Mr. Rogers said about the teacher-coaching position, I still can't quit calling them that, instructional coach. But, and I appreciate what you said about my daughter. And she, she's enjoyed her job this year immensely. I think the biggest thing has been feeling like you're pulled in three different directions and feeling like each school needs you there more than you're there. And from what I've understood from people stopping me and talking to me about her and the, and the job she's done and different things, it's like, I just wish I had her every day or, you know, at least more than I do, and we just need her more, you know. And so adding a position and having these coaches not have to be spread as thin, well, I think is a tremendous asset. I think they can be so much more effective if they only have like two schools versus three and stuff like that. So I think that's a really good move, and I wholeheartedly do support that for sure. My other question, and I don't know if this ties into this technology engineer positions at all, but I just want to ask you about this because we're seeing on the news so much lately about all this ransomware attacks. And I know Haywood County was attacked at the beginning of the school year last year, you know, and they were over a week behind starting school because of a ransomware attack. Is there anything in your budget that specifically speaks to trying to up all of your protection?
It's not an increase, but we have line items in our budget that helps take care of. Nitor Solutions is our people that help us with that. And then on top of that, last year, we came to you with an increase in our insurance costs for the backend, if we are hit, to take care of that. So we're fighting it on one end and protecting ourselves on the other.
One, one thing I may want to add, these are, you've got leadership in the IT, basically is what we're getting. We are also looking, if you look at our Estes budget, we are going, we're in contact and working closely with Forsyth Tech to get eight to 10 recent graduates that are just bang out great. We just need somebody to lead that team. These kids come out of Forsyth Tech, and we're encouraging them to look for Stokes County residents that have gone to Forsyth Tech and got their two-year degree. Now they're ready to enter the workforce. The money is only for three years, but our intention is now we've got a local product, for lack of better words, that has just graduated, that has three years worth of working in the IT for Stokes County schools to pad their resume to help attract more business because now we have a workforce in Stokes County. Although it's only eight to 10, but it's a great stepping stone to the next level. But they come in knowing it's a three-year position, but it's a three-year gold star on their resume. And we just need somebody to oversee those.
Well, um.
Know what they're looking for too.
Will you cut, will it cut down on any of your contracted services having that?
And what a huge help to our media coordinators or librarians that wear mini hats with, you know, testing and juggling all these technology issues they were hit with during the school year. testing and juggling all these technology issues they were hit with during the school year. So to know that they can call one of these folks up or have them rotate and stationed at different schools, you know, it's going to be a huge asset.
Update is going on.
Yeah, basically, that's what I was alluding to. I don't have anything else right now, let somebody else talk.
Thank you. I just have a few questions, Doc. We had, we've received our amount that we'll be getting from Ice Rescue Plan. Could you tell me how much the school system is getting out of that?
Thirteen million, three hundred ninety-four thousand, four hundred eighty-eight dollars.
About?
About. You ever take a couple, couple of quarters? Thirteen million, three hundred and ninety-four thousand, four eighty-eight.
For time out of y'all just as we did when we received our amount. You have guidelines and restrictions of what you can use them for. One of the things I did notice though in our use of, of something, asking you to tie back into commissioners of broadband technology contracts, ways to us for the county, that was one thing that we could use our amount for. Is that one thing the school system can use that for?
It didn't talk, for the school systems, it wasn't limited to the county. The money that came into the school systems, the state held back 10% of it, we got 90%. School districts get 90% of it. The state had to use that 10% for broadband connectivity as well. There was some things that we looked, that we were able to do for technology, for, for learning things that we've looked at. It wasn't specifically for broadband. Where we have looked at ours is like the Texas assistance that Mr. Rogers talked about, getting Forsyth Tech recent grads to do the troubleshooting and when things break in the schools that we have, to work on those as well. So that's where we've designated ours out of that, but it wasn't for broadband for us. But the state had a set aside for broadband out of the money that ended up being filtered to us. But they took it off the broadband before it came to us.
That's my regulation, regulation. You know, resume conferences, Forsyth Tech, Reaisa, I'm a committee. I'm also, I'm the chairman of the policy committee for Forsyth Tech. And Zoom conference, that's why I was, I kept it close to them, we had a Zoom conference. Well, that lasted a little longer than normal. Technology was one of the things that needs certainly, it's not easy. Because the world is going to pass you by, you know, keep up with it, push space around. Not today before you go to the blackboard and work out that. People, sometimes people that hasn't been in a classroom a long time, they think that's still the way it's always, I'm talking to them. They all know that, that's one reason why. You know, it's important to us getting broadband out to our people here in the county. Need to know, it seemed like I saw somewhere in your description of things that, did you, were y'all asking for 75,000 or payment of officials?
We had looked at increasing our budget, 75,000 this year and next year. We did it through local money to help our athletic programs with up to $20,000 in reimbursement to our high schools each, for officials and travel. And then 5,000 at our middle school level. As you know, we were extremely limited in the number of people that could come to games. I think during basketball season, it was 25 people or 50 people in the gym. And a lot of those have employee passes or whatever, but the official costs were the same. The travel cost is the same, but our incomes were severely limited at those levels. And so the board agreed to designate 75,000 in local funds to help offset that. Again, in a reimbursement model of what y'all spent on travel and officials, we will repay up to $20,000 per each high school. And we look to do that again for next year, again, with facing an unknown of what we make. Right now, things are on the uptick, but as masks go away and people stop being vaccinated, if there's an outbreak again and they come back with those rules, we're going to be facing the same thing of possibly limited crowds. So the board was proactive and said that's there if needed for next year as well.
Well, I certainly was very aware of your limitations this year. Officiating high school, I meant to match this, my score to seven or eight. What I got paid is official. I couldn't cover the cost of my officiating. And I've got the schools who are being hurt severely. That's why I've been, you know, new school, that that can be eliminated and we can get full stands. It's just not the same when you walk into a basketball game and you can't have the 25 people there. And when you can walk into a basketball game and you got a gym floor, you know, your supporters, that makes a big difference. Not just financially, makes a big difference in morale. Kids want to support their school, unfortunately.
Absolutely. And in addition to that, just the fact of the limiting where there were games in football season where only home fans were allowed. The safety factor of that, of if a kid were to get knocked unconscious. And I know school personnel will get in an ambulance and go with somebody, but again, as a, as a parent who has a freshman football player this year, and my thoughts when that happened was, you know, what if some, what if he tears an ACL? What if he gets knocked unconscious? And he's heading to a hospital without his parents. And while he loves his coaches and his coaches take care of them, yeah, I'd kind of like to be there as a dad if he's facing something like that and not leave him alone. And if he's at Fort Bush, you know, how long's it going to take me to get to him? And it really put people in a bad light. And again, we hope it gets back to number, normal. This, the board did, I believe, the right thing in looking to reimburse for officials and travel. But they're behind eight ball financially and they will be for a while with the loss of, the loss of games, the loss of fans that came to games. They're going to be hurting, our athletic program's going to be hurting financially for several years to come.
Well, I know that certainly we carry on to next year, at least my year, I had to call a wrestling match last night.
Four wrestler, four matches?
Called one match.
Called one?
Four people. Nine people in the charge of first round. Just be five.
Six.
But even at nine people, plus five, six, fifty-four.
And that's assuming all of them paid.
Yeah.
If they were employed, they may not have paid.
That's true. And I know what I was paying and covering. I talked to Mr. Racquet.
We did that for this last year and we did it for this next year, all with the unknowns.
Well, the other component, football and basketball are the major money producing sports. That 75,000 doesn't even approach what football recertification, helmets have to be recertified every year, refinished every year. And then after 10 years, they have to be kind of replaced. So, I mean, those aspects are not even touched, we haven't even gotten to that point. You can't have, you can't have a marching band fundraiser if you can't have a football game for the marching band playoff. You can't have an athletic booster that would help with the uniform cost. If you can't have a football game for an athletic booster to sell a tenderloin sandwich at South Stokes, I don't want to make you hungry, just bear with me.
Yeah, maybe. I mean, I have heard of you, it's keep pumping.
Yeah, so I mean, and then the referees, they're charging full price whether there's anybody there or not. One of them called one match, I bet he got paid full price, I'm not going to tell him why.
Well, I mean, that's the other, that's the other part of that, that you mentioned concessions. We were, we were even limited on what we could do with that. We'd have to be prepackaged, individual. Well, we know that around here, the moneymaker's in the home cooked food. And you give somebody the option of a prepackaged thing of chips or hot dog, you know, a prepackaged thing of nachos with a little bag and a cup that you, or that tenderloin sandwich itself. They weren't able to make the tenderloin sandwiches at all this year. And so the amount of revenue these booster clubs lost is unbelievable.
Appreciate your answers from all board members.
You told me I could have said it in the Wayne Barney council.
Oh, I'm sorry. The situation with the official. On your capital, you've got 37, 38 items, so it's within prior, I'm assuming.
Pretty much in priority order.
It's only a five-year study. And that's a 598,600 increase last year. So 2,122,600 for capital. And I'll be honest, the way I look at things is, is I always put safety items first. If it's a safety item, I'm going to support it every time. Because you don't want your students, you, parents don't send their children to school and think that they don't want to make sure that school is safe. Brushable foundations, roofs, things of that nature must be made. You know, sometimes when you get down to your last five or six items, they can be a little bit worked with, you know, some of your items are necessary. Always try to distinguish necessary or is it just a wish?
Needs won't to wish, I said.
And, you know, it's like, definitely just a safety item, something that's mandated by the state. Or it always happens to them. Y'all, and it happens to us, that we get mandates from the state, but yet they don't want to pay for it. They want to put it back on the old record.
If you ever, if you ever see on here the private bathroom for the superintendent's office, you'll know we've gotten to the wish list and the other needs. So if you ever see that, you'll know we're done.
But you'll see that with carpentry classes. Have moon on the outside and switch wood and sit around outside his office.
This first round, Mr. Chairman, that's not what I was running.
Mr. Ferguson?
Well, yes, welcome everybody and outstanding job, I'm putting all my best to give. This has been my first year as a career student, when I was going through all this, I couldn't do that stuff like I've ever seen in many numbers of five. But, just look at the maintenance position I will go, Dwight and I kind of in the same field. I've been big on the can't stop life, that's all I've done at work, work and get to school. Just picked up, used TIB two year ago, been there 44 years. So in the maintenance field, you know, quick learning, if you even want to stay in one spot, you do. But if you don't, you keep going on and that's, that's the way the TIBs go today, you stay behind if you don't. I just got a few questions, what year did they give the 4% raise?
Year and a half ago?
Well, we unfroze.
Jamie was on the board.
When Jamie, Rick, Andy came on board.
Was that December, January where that was?
Jamie seconded it.
Was that 28?
Eighteen.
Twenty, the winner of 2018, 19?
Yes.
That did not increase the supplement.
That unfroze the supplement. The supplement had been 4% for a long time, actually.
Many years.
But then, 2012, 2013, to balance the budget, they froze the supplement based on the pay of 2013. And so as the raises went up, if you were making $1,200 in a supplement, your supplement stayed at 1,200 even though your salary went up. So therefore, your percentage went down. So, and it was up to about 3.3%, I think, when the board made it whole and put it back to the full 4%. Which was, again, not necessarily an increase, it was an increase for the employees, but it just made it whole to the full 4% that had been in place for years. So I don't remember, and Ms. Moore's not here, our historian, to remember when it actually went to 4%.
Prior to 2010.
It was, yes, it was prior to then.
It was over there, yeah.
It was frozen.
It was frozen.
I want to say since I was on the board, it went from maybe three and a half to four, but that was probably.
You went on the board around 2000?
Yeah. Yeah, so it was, it was a good while ago before it's ever been increased other than unfrozen it.
When we looked at the counties surrounding us and stuff, we're the one, in Yankee County, Burton Harbor County with less students, they, five and a half. I just put the same time tags.
Doc, Ross, you might have asked this question earlier, I just wanted to pay attention. Have you seen that, has there been a decrease in the kids since this COVID, towards coming back to school?
We have, we've lost a couple hundred kids. Again, a lot of that had to do with masks and people said, when the masks go away, we'll come back.
I heard that.
And so, but that was our big loss.
One great thing I'd love to hear, we'll go as a gentleman, talk about the firefighter class y'all started. And I take my hat off to y'all, being a fire servant for 41 years. Outstanding job on the teaching yard, a lot of classes lived, a lot of training. And it's great to hear that we've got that many kids participating in that class.
We appreciate the county's support with that, whether from getting that started to, there's plenty of times I've gone over to South Stokes for something else and there's a fire truck sitting out there or EMS truck sitting out there. So the continued daily support that y'all have given that with allowing, and we know if a call happens, they're going to leave, but, but they're out there supporting it as we go too, so we certainly appreciate that.
And that's advertising the South Stokes Marshall, for lack of a better word. You see them out there working with them. Our goal is to expand and all that. If we get the program big enough, we go to free BLET and EMS. We're already doing public safety.
But that, that's good interaction on both sides, the kids and the fire parks. And not only that, they're learning too, so that's a great thing to hear. You brought it to 38, I love this, you had two roof lists, is that correct?
Ten, that's right.
One way that follows me, and I don't know how this transferred to, comes that, how did we get to get roofs, these people were terrible, repaired in the school?
From our roofing list?
Yeah, there's T L here.
Every year, they go up and check roofs. And we project the 10 worst roofs that need to be repaired. And some of them can just take another Band-Aid and maybe get another year out of it. But those are the 10 in priority order that we have that are all going to need to be replaced in the next several years. And then we slot them into our budget and then looking at which, which ones can be repaired and get another year out of them and which ones can't.
I'm sure you let EPD roof, they ain't no good, so I'd say why you the place to do it. We had a pile of work, so.
Well, part of the way we got there, and I think Commissioner Meno and Ms. Cox will verify, there for a while, our capital expense budget from the county was $300,000. Roof in South, one roof in South was $330,000 in years past. So we had a lot of roofs that unfortunately, they started leaking. So we had a lot of roofs that, unfortunately, they started leaking with the patch on top of the patch, on top of the patch, on top of the roof, start, you know. But this board has done an excellent job of helping us catch up.
And in the words Buck's been passed.
That's done over the years, more than one facing the problem, or you just can't go nowhere.
Well, that's kind of where I was going with that.
Plus our buildings, our schools are getting so old. You know, we got, I mean, there's a whole other set of issues there with those aged buildings. And we're going, sooner or later, have to deal with it.
Our newest high school is twenty-one years old, right?
Well, I just want, I just want to say to Board Member Rogers, I appreciate him bringing that up. Because, you know, I happen to have it right here. And we went about five years where we had capital plus from two hundred thousand to five hundred thousand dollars.
I was on the board then, and what could you do with two hundred thousand dollars? Next year it was what, three hundred thousand? I mean, you couldn't even name two.
I understand, I understand some of the thought process to get the fund balance up to where it is a serviceable number.
And to get the debt down. But it was, I don't know how, I don't know how you slept it now, just to me.
It was frightening for him, you know, just from in.
When you look at our budget, the number one thing on it, that Ricky's going to make sure that's on there every year, or he's going to hit me, is a hundred thousand dollars for emergencies. And you have nineteen buildings, that's a realistic number. Just the things that pop up is a hundred thousand dollars. Well, that was half the capital, one year that he had, was just for emergencies. And that's, you're just sitting around waiting with Band-Aids, waiting on something to happen. Has every building in the district got a year or two older?
Thank you, Dr. Rice. And also, I saw, I saw Dr. Hobbs had an auction last year. You know, he, when I retired, before you were hired in the summer, he was the interim. And he's become an auctioneer part-time now. Dr. Hobbs looked at me that day and he said, Ronnie, I really just don't see how you manage each of the county running capital-wise with what you were getting. He said, because I just went, he went through the process with y'all during that interim. Because I left in January, and he came in and he did, he was one of handling the budget with y'all.
Yeah, that's right.
And he said, I just don't see how you manage to do that.
We were able to replace two roofs this year, hopefully. You had to buy buckets just to cover the leaks. That's about all you had the money to buy was buckets.
Well, I told that at meetings, you know, how much money we'd gotten for capital outlay. And I was told that, right to my face, I wasn't telling the truth. But that was not true. But it was. And it was really, and then the next year, just a hundred thousand more. But, you know, people wouldn't believe you when you told them. They just wouldn't believe you.
We had to delay opening one building at South because we had eighty-two thousand dollars worth of mold remediation. Because the leak just kept going, and we did not have the money for the roof. Eighty-two thousand dollars late, we got the money for the roof. This board has helped us be proactive.
And there are still many more roof needs on our list.
There's a list of ten.
And I would.
Absolutely. But as going through y'all's capital, two things really jumped out at me, that's going to do it. Was it nineteen eighty-five international bus and then nineteen ninety, give or take?
We get our, we try to use.
I say you got your money worth out. I say you really did.
And remember, they were used when we bought them. The state gives us, we had to buy them from the state used, so.
Did you need nineteen sixty-four fire, firing?
My mom and I say that.
It'll be for sale on gun deals if you're still.
Hello, folks.
Mr. Moore? Just a little clarification on what we were just talking about. The fact that we were getting those low payments. The, there was no appetite for raising taxes. And then we were also paying school debt with that same money. So that's contributing. And once the debt got paid off, then the trend went upward as far as capital expenditures. But something has to give. You got to raise some taxes, or you don't have the money to do these things. That for clarification. On the capital list, Ricky mentioned this was two of six million requirement. Is the rest of the five-year capital list, would it be like, that's about a third, I guess? So if they, like, there's three times thirty-eight items on there for the full five-year plan? Or is it, is it, like, is there one or two big items that are taken?
I don't believe it would be that simple extrapolation because the five-year plan also includes some things, some high-dollar items.
Yeah.
Some building needs, et cetera. So I don't believe it would be that simple, that simplistic. But we did try to take what was immediate and reasonable from that five-year plan and apply it to this budget. And as we, they began developing next year's capital budget, we'll go right back to that plan and pull from that again. It's not going to be that simplistic, but we will continue to refer to that.
I should also be adding additional items to this plan.
Things will pop up that we didn't know about this year.
Yeah, we'll build and stuff.
Well, when I first got hired, I run around with David Burge and Ricky. And we went around to every campus and I said, just talk about what we need. And again, as some of y'all have been around all these buildings and know them intimately, you know, there's a lot of buildings that were built in the fifties and sixties. And so, while the bones are good, the galvanized pipe are all getting leaks. The H B A C equipment and all of them are getting old. As we said, the youngest schools on the block, the youngest high school can boat, all is twenty-one years old. Think of West Oaks High School being a new school, was twenty-one years old. So that means, well, I was trying not to say that, but go ahead. We're all adults. So, but, I mean, so that roof and those parking lots, when you start talking parking lot replacement for West Oaks, I don't know how many millions of dollars that would cost. And so, and again, it's in good shape right now. But the one at South Stokes and North Stokes are starting to alligator up. And at some point, they're going to have, they're going to need to be replaced. And so, there's lots of needs in just a lot of older buildings. Again, when we ask our principals, what are your top three needs? It came up to about six and a half billion dollars. And there were some of them didn't get anything on their list, on this list. Because the board tried to be conservative and just look at what's the most pressing issues we have. What's, which ones are the safety issues? Or which one are causing, you know, I know there's some carpet replacement about. I said, well, that's not a safety issue. Some parents, again, when you're talking in an age of competitiveness, if a parent walks in for open house, and you don't want your kid to sit on the floor because they're afraid of how nasty it is and all that, it's time to get it replaced. We wouldn't live in our houses with carpet as nasty. Again, you start getting twenty-five-year-old carpet with four hundred people a day walking in the media center. It's wear and tear. And we wouldn't want that in our houses. Parents don't want their kids going to school there either.
We can relate to that over on this side.
So, well, and I know that there's one in here, and some people may question, well, there is a central office carpet in here. If you go in there, it is a safety hazard. There's a gap this big in the floor where the carpet's ripped up, where people could trip on it. And again, you just walk into it and there's streaks of ripped carpet that's a safety hazard and looks horrible and nasty.
There's a couple things to keep in mind. As I mentioned earlier, for Dr. Rice's staff, we were trying to be creative with Esther's money. We were able to address some window needs that will come off of our five-year plan if we're able to use Esther's money for that. And anytime you can speak to state legislators, if they can ever help us with the budget. When the budget was originally approved two years ago, there was a line item for each school district to get state capital money. And Stokes County at that time stood to gain about eleven, twelve million dollars.
Twelve million dollars.
And that budget has been held up now for two years. Just reading some of the information coming out of Raleigh, there is ongoing discussions about some state-type money, state-type capital money that might be able to be used. But the Esther's money really helped with windows, and that will come off of our five-year plan, of course. So we try to be creative, Ricky and his staff, Drake to work with, Dr. Rice, the board. As I mentioned earlier, we all try to be good stewards of the money that we have to work with. And try to stretch that. I have the reputation of trying to stretch it down into a quarter or fifty cent piece if possible. So we do try to be respectful of the money to give us and get as much for it as we can.
I don't have any issue with the requirements. They all look like valid requirements to me, so. And that's what you would expect with the age of our buildings and so forth. One other question for our folks on the capital. The money that was proposed by the county manager to fund the capital request, is that all passed through money that has to go to the school system?
Yes, the sales tax.
It's either we hold it or they hold it, right?
We hold it, yes.
But we don't, but we don't have to hold it, though. Because it has to go to them eventually.
It has to go to them essentially.
Okay. Okay, I think that's all I really had on the capital piece. On a couple of other areas, the, Julia gave us this sheet about COVID money. I want to make sure I understand these outside pots of money. Maybe everybody else does, I'm not sure I do. This sheet is COVID, is COVID P R C, state and federal. It shows a total amount of sixteen million, not six ninety-nine, three twenty. And with twenty-six, forty-one, two million, six forty-one, two thirteen, seven fourteen, oh fifty-eight, one oh seven as a balance. Is that, is that the A R P, the rescue plan money, or is that something different?
I'm not sure what sheet you're holding, is that one?
I'm just trying to understand, is there, like, is there more than one external pot of money for COVID or for rescue or whatever?
Well, again, what I've said before, in the thirteen million, three ninety-four, four eighty-eight, that is in Esters two and three. The state did allot some money. And again, Ms. Moore would be wonderful if she was here. I got a printout earlier, but I don't know if it's going to be broken down like that.
You don't have to answer it right now, I'm just curious of what.
That came off the D P I website.
Okay, because the state gave us some money that we were able to use for the cleaning supplies last year.
That'd be like the two million something then?
I don't know, two million.
Two million six six seven so far.
It may be, I can check with Ms. Moore. I can check.
Because to keep our students in the classroom, and we had to be like backpack ionized or sprayers and all this sort of thing.
That may be, but I can check. That may be state, the state funds in addition to the other.
I'm just trying to understand the outside funds that are available and how they can be used versus what we're going to fund your guys to use.
The state funds were designated for COVID-related expenses to get our schools open and running. And whether that was, you know, part of that had to be funded in child nutrition, as they lost money this year. Some of that had to be done into the cleaning supplies, the extra hours that went into that, the overtime pay, the extra people that we had to put on staff, nurses and different things. A lot of that came out of that state money. Again, I can't say that that's exactly what that total is, but Ms. Moore can. The Esther's money that also came through had certain requirements. Again, we're trying to use that proactively as one of the line items that was specifically stated, is it can be used for window replacements. Knowing that we have the age of our buildings and energy efficiency, we look to designate about a million of our thirteen-three in for window replacements. But it all has to tie directly to COVID or learning loss due to COVID.
Well, you just take this sheet, but to her and ask her if, I mean, there's a fourteen million dollar balance. I just wonder what's going to happen to that.
Well, the thirteen-three just got released, and we haven't spent any of that yet. Because it just was released to us. Our grant was approved in the first of May, and then the money started dropping last week. We've not skipped that current expense type stuff. It's all for COVID-related expense. And we were told that we had to spend so much on summer school. Well, when we run summer school, again, that's not a current expense budget. But that's, this year we had to run an enhanced summer school that's bigger and longer than ever before. The busing for that, all of that that went in with that. Again, the cleaning supplies that we've had to buy that were over and above what we normally do. That's what, again, with our Esther's money, with the learning loss and the social, emotional needs of that, we're looking at putting in some extra guidance counselors, some extra maintenance positions, some E S L teachers to try to make up. We have more failures this year than ever before. So we're going to have more people taking Math One again, for example. So we need more Math One teachers than we needed in the past. Summer school, we're designating with all the requirements that we had this year, nine hundred thousand this year for that, and then about five twenty-five for the next three years. But all that money is to try to make up for learning loss and make up for the COVID expenses that we had with that. And it has to tie directly to that, because we'll be altered on all of it. And it will, that's three years, what we assume will be non-recurring money after the three years.
Okay. We kind of looked at it as, our students' population basically has lost a year in the classroom, but at least a year and a half worth of education. So we looked at options for additional tutors, trying to get those that didn't have the broadband or didn't have the home structure that would allow them to stay not up. So we just allocated, we put the money in the principal's hands because they're the people that know the backstory of the student. It wasn't, you've got to spend it this way. It's, we trust you with the school, spend it, how do you think you're going to get the most bang for your buck? So I don't forget, I want to draw on what Sonja said. And congratulate you guys on surviving this COVID thing. I can't imagine how you did that. I think it'd make my head hurt to have you explain it to me. But I'm just really glad that you did that. And I think that's amazing, we need to pull that off. But what a challenge. The other thing, I guess, were these outside pots of money that are all kind of confusing us. And there's more than one of them in some cases. If you guys would talk to us, if you see any chance you're going to lose some of that money for some reason, can't be spent for some reason or something, you probably all need to put our heads together and make sure we don't lose anything. If at all possible, given whatever the restrictions are on the funds.
They gave us, again, the thirteen-three. When the board sat together and started looking at the needs that we could use it on, we got to about seventeen, eighteen million.
We started eighteen and a half, and then we got to thinking, and then it's carried into twenty.
And then we had to cut it back down to thirteen. So we've got about seven million in our head that if something goes, something becomes an unallowable expense, we've got other things to put it towards.
Okay, are you also getting money from the American Rescue Plan?
This, that is what this is.
That is what that was.
This is federal money.
Okay, but then was there other outside money before this?
The state had some money first, and that's what we used to get us up and running for last year.
That's what did all the.
That's already been used.
And that's gone.
That's already gone.
This is American Rescue Plan money, this?
This federal money is, Esther's two and three.
Okay.
Yeah, because it was funny, yesterday, I contacted the county hall office. I was actually applying for a grant.
Miracle.
And Michael Fire, he replied back to me, and it was, he said that the county, our county was projected to get eight million, eight hundred fifty-five thousand, seven hundred fifteen dollars. And it even mentioned the school about the sixteen million. So funny, I mean, how did this come up, you know, when I applied for that grant? I think it was huge that I applied for it. And he sent all the numbers back to me. That was a projected number. I got the guidelines that Anderson out there, and pretty much still got to read about what you can do with that money.
Getting ready to, I didn't get my email.
Yes.
The, on your, on the current expense stuff here, the little blue chart.
Yes, sir.
The, how did you guys go about prioritizing, like, when you put these two positions ahead of the five percent supplement? Was that, did that have something to do with the cost of those items? Or was it, is it just pure priority as far as, I kind of thought the five percent might be kind of first instead of second or third?
Well, it is, and it can be. And again, you could ask five board members, we could all probably come up with a different list. And in that, and it's kind of like picking which finger do you want to hit with a hammer? I can prioritize one or two because that's what I write with or dial my phone with. But to be honest, all of it's going to hurt if I don't get it. And, you know, it's, the five percent is there.
This is all high priority then?
Yeah, this is all high priority, and. Yeah, this is all high priority, and again, so, do you keep and retain staff? Is that the most important? Yes, but is, at the same time, the instructor, the data people, if our computers break and we don't have people to work on them, can you teach them anyway? Without the instructional coaches, are the teachers getting what they need in the classroom? Or are they leaving because of lack of support? It's, they're all high priorities. I mean, would it be easy to put one on all of them? Yeah, it would. And it depends on the day, which one's the biggest priority.
That's kind of the point of my question was, they're really all close together.
They are.
I don't like big differences in the priorities, right? What's the, only the number six, when the public information off you guys, it also says contract service on there. What's that about?
That would be, that would be hired as contract services, that wouldn't be a full-time position.
Oh, okay.
Maybe find somebody that's retired or something like that, where we wouldn't be paying full benefits.
They're just going to do the first two things, and they're going to be on contract.
Correct, they'd be contract.
One other question on that is, since we increased the supplement, we had asked you guys to start to monitor, I guess, your turnover trend. Have you had enough time to even establish a trend yet?
Not with COVID, because COVID is forcing people into retirement.
Okay.
So, I don't think there'd be an accurate assessment.
So, a year from now, maybe you'll kind of have something. Okay, Mike mentioned one thing too, he used the word, I think, number four here, the multi-tiered system as being a mandate, is that what you said?
Yes, yes.
Does that mean you got to do it?
We have to have MTSS, we have to have full implementation of it, and therefore, we have to coordinate that, because we have to teach the administrators what to do, what to, how to do it in the school. To be prepared to do it.
So, it's different than the other five mandates, they're not mandated, but this one is?
Well, again, this one is mandated from the state. We've been doing it by passing that hat to different people, which is forcing retirement to resignation, because it's-
It's who drew the short straw this year gets the MTSS coordination. A mandate.
With four other things already on it, it's a lot of money.
No, it is not funded for that. It's an unfunded mandate.
Yeah, a few of them. We got a few of them here. Chairman Hall, how many unfunded mandates did you get during your time?
I lost count after one.
The only thing I'll say with that, and we took that in conjunction with a grant rider, and we hope that this collaboration continues, because our goal is to find a lot of grants, and somehow there may be a matching fund. If it makes fiscal sense for the county, we'll come to you over it. If it doesn't make sense to match it, that's not a grant we will pursue. But that is like the firefighter academy, we hope it pays back tenfold. Okay, I just got a few more questions on that. The, on the current expense fund balance, we, I think we've had discussions about keeping that around three fifty. I think Julia told me it's eight hundred something now, is that right? Current expense fund balance down there?
Per the audit, it was eight.
Does that sound right?
Yes, sir.
So, do we?
Nine, eight ninety-eight. I'm sorry, would you repeat that? Would you repeat that? Two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eight ninety-eight unassigned per your audit.
So, is that, is that money that's sitting there that could be used for some of these things you guys requested in current expense? I mean, if we still agree that it is to be at three fifty. Isn't that what we tapped into recently to go back and get some of the things that didn't make last year's budget?
That was, that was the unassigned as of the audit that we had in twenty. So, and we have got into some of that, but then there's, again, Lynette will be very cautious about fund balance till the next audit because of the unpaid bills that still have to come in. So, potentially, yes, if it's all still there at this point. And again, I'm not going to answer that without her sitting here.
Right, but I have to say that I would bet money that we have the lowest fund balance of any school system in our area. I would bet money.
Even if that's the case, though, the county's on the hook to back you up if you have an emergency.
But you know, we still need a fund balance, and I feel like that we, it would help us to build up some of our fund balance, because all school systems have those. And we've been drained of our fund balance a lot, even when Ms. Cox was on the board. We were drained and drained of our fund balance. And it's an uneasy feeling to have such a low fund balance. And when we go to the conventions and things, and I hear all these people talk about the fund balance they have, and when I go to community meetings and school boards, and we sit around the table, and people talk about the fund balance, it's unbelievable how low ours is as compared to other counties.
Yeah, well, we need to take that into consideration, but I think we kind of all agreed about three fifty was the right amount to keep there a year or two ago.
You mean three hundred and fifty thousand?
County manager, yeah, and-
Well, they were, that's absolute lowest it needed to be.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's lower than any county around here.
One of our neighboring counties is twenty million. When I was in Ashboro, which is about a thousand less students, theirs was around four million.
How much?
Four million. And so, you know, it's relative, and again, we're grateful we haven't had the emergency, and I hope you all understand if we come up here with a major emergency. But it is, it's difficult to, it's difficult to plan a school year when you're looking at classes that maybe you need an extra teacher or not, and then realize, but if, if we don't get funded for that or enrollment pops down a little bit and we lose sixty thousand dollars, we're broke or in the ring.
Well, yeah, I'm hoping to be discussing that level it should be, but, you know, the general statute says that whenever you guys do use that three fifty, it's on the hook for us out of our fund balance to cover your emergency. So, it's not like you don't have it. It's just what is the logical amount that you would, I guess, turn during a year? And so, if it needs to be readjusted-
And from my understanding, the Board of County Commissioners recommends for y'all to have a certain level.
Yeah, three months operating costs, including which. Would that include them?
That's the LPC, yes. Statute says eight percent.
That's what I was thinking, around that eight percent mark. You know, eight percent for us would be a lot more than three hundred fifty thousand dollars, but they don't have that written for school boards.
But if we go under eight percent, the state takes them. They take every decision-making vote.
I believe you're saying that's good fiscal management to have at least eight percent. And we don't have eight percent.
And one chiller at West Oak. We debt with that in the past year with what, three hundred thousand dollars? One chiller?
The reason I bring it up is that when our proposed budget has a sixteen percent fund balance in, and I guarantee you, that's not three months operating expenses. And so, the two are tied to each other. If we give you a low amount of money, that means we need to have more in our fund balance. And so, but we just need to reach an agreement about what's the, I mean, we don't need to stash a bunch of abstracts down there that you're not going to use every year, but if three fifty's not enough, we should probably- Talk about what it should be. I think I agree. I agree, and I think part of, part of our big concern is because of the age of our buildings. I mean, we've got elementary schools and high schools before our fifty-four-year-old high school was built. So, like we said, the Chiller West Oak's four hundred thousand, that's more than we have in fund balance, so then we've got to run up here.
That's capital on current expense, right?
Yeah, but, you know, in general, our expenses, if we have extra unassigned expense, that's when we start acquiring or- Actually, I think you're actually allowed to use your current expense fund balance to core capital, aren't you?
We can, we can-
Well, we had to at one time.
We made that request to you, yeah.
Remember, we had to use our current expense balance to put a roof on South Oak several, several years ago.
Yeah.
Before Dr. Rice came.
Yeah, okay. One more question. One thing we need to explore, I guess, as we further our discussions, and what's, I didn't ask this questionnaire, is I, but we should have a fund balance in our four cent fund, four cent fund with the model.
Yes.
And I think whenever Jamie and Andy and I got here, we talked about expanding the use of that four cent fund to do stuff with the buildings. To do, I mean, to maintain buildings and do remodeling and so forth, so. We agreed to that.
I thought we did.
I thought we did too. And so, whatever that fund balance is, we need to make sure we factor that in for whatever needs we have. That would be capital, I think.
What is that fund balance?
I don't know what it is. Do you know what that fund balance is in the four cent fund? That bowl beside you is big enough?
He ain't got no Snickers in it.
I estimated it to be, this fifth year, be two million, five forty-four.
Two million, five forty-four.
That's what I estimated.
How much?
Could you repeat that? Two million, five forty-four.
And that fund balance is in place to take care of several contingencies with the model. So, it has to stay at a pretty high level.
Depending upon our amount of debt?
Do what?
Depending upon our amount of school debt.
Yeah, and things like the lottery funds going away, or the QZAP, QSCAPs going away. It has to be able to cover all those things if that happens.
And that's technically the school's money, it couldn't be spent for anything else.
Well, so far, we, the commissioners have the authority to change that anytime they want to, but they haven't. So, your statement's correct unless the commissioners change it.
So, right now, it's-
I think we did, I think we expanded the use of it, if I remember correctly.
We did that one time to do a review.
Yeah, not just to cover the projects it was originally put in place for, but to do additional stuff.
But it has to be requested, is that right?
Yeah, we would have to, we'd have to make a deliberate decision to reduce it below a certain level of fund balance. The financial advisor, Carter, would tell us what that number was. But we can't take any chance of it not being able to cover the debt and the contingencies that could happen. It would, like I just said, like the, say, the lottery goes away, or the QZAP, QSCAP. And this current federal government we have with that bunch of looms up there, I don't have any idea what they might, what they would do with a QZAP, QSCAP, or even quite know about.
They don't even know what that means.
Probably not, but if they did, they might cancel them, you know? And they actually have reduced them. I mean, not, not this administration, but others have reduced our reimbursement on that, so. Anyway, so, I'd just like to look at that. And one last question. Before we split it, this is fire products too, before we split into the two funds, like the thirty-one cents and the thirty-one cents, we basically, like the budget message would say, we have sixty-two cent tax rate.
Yes.
And we're spending this percentage of it for the county and this percentage of that revenue for the school system. But now, we have this year with a rather significant increase in the school system's budget request and recommendation of what we're going to do with them from the manager. But shouldn't that thirty-one be moving? I mean, while we have a giant increase in what we're spending in the school, under the whole system, that percentage would have shifted from what you're spending on the county to what you're spending on the school. But it still just stays at thirty-one, thirty-one, so. That's a little confusing to me, because now the thirty-one carries it, thirty-one's that, school fund carries the fund balance also.
Right.
So, we've got so many fund balances and outside money, I can't keep this straight.
Send two cents, but send two separate funds.
Yeah, so, but it used to be in one fund.
Correct.
Which is our general fund, right?
That's still really general fund, is that what schools are?
Yeah, so, that's, I guess, the point I want to clarify, that even though we split it into two funds, that fund balance that's in the school's hand for that is not automatically funded for school. It really is part of the general fund balance, so we'll factor that in.
There's not a school tax loaded in?
Yeah, exactly. I think that's all I had, but it's true.
County funds separated.
I might have asked you a question you probably don't want to ask.
Go ahead.
You said the attendance was down a little bit, is there any schools that's looking to drop below the hundred?
We've got several that are in the ballpark of it, but not projected to go below that in the fall.
Do you see Osprey Baby going back up, come fall, because of COVID restrictions and all?
Certainly, the hope is that if those restrictions are released, that those numbers will come back. Even if, and I, right now, they're saying that the biggest holdup is that the younger kids don't have the eligibility to be vaccinated at this point. I'm hoping that since twelve-year-olds and up have had that opportunity now, since the first of May or middle of May, that at least they'll take away the mask mandates in middle and high school. But there, the talk is that the vaccines should be available by September, October, at the latest for elementary schools. So, the talk is that it may be, you know, November, December, that the masks go away in the elementary school. The latest we've heard is our state is going to be very responsive to the CDC. Even if the vaccine's not available, if the CDC goes back and says, you know what, take them off the school, that our state would follow suit with that. Again, there's no promises with that, but they said that they are waiting on CDC guidance. The irony of all that to me is, when they, back last October, when they allowed elementary school students to go back five days a week, it was because elementary students weren't transmission risk. And now, they're the holdup to removing masks. Well, either you're going to the transmission risk or you're not. And so, when it was convenient, they, maybe for daycare purposes, the kids, the parents to go back to work, they weren't transmission risk then, but now it's the holdup on masks. So, it makes me think there's more to it at play than just the actual science of it. But hopefully, if the masks are back in play, we're back to normal, that people come back to us. Again, that's what they told us they want to do. For one, it's an increased burden to families that have been paying for private school. And so, I don't think that's the case.
Thank you, sir. Move on to item three.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to have to go back to what you just said. We had, we had one commissioner that brought up during the election campaign about the amount of schools, amount of numbers in the schools as an important issue. And it's always a touchy issue, and I can understand why. You probably wasn't sure whether you really wanted to ask that question. But you're a good man.
I appreciate that.
I knew you would ask that. Fuck, I do know that we have. And Mr. Rogers is looking at his hands, I think, I know what he's going to say. Because we went through it, of course. But I happen to have the locations of all the places that gives me all the numbers of all the schools for the last ten years, and I was the one that had this year. Just got to bite the bullet and come out and be honest. I have a lot of people in this county who know why. And, and, you know, I know as superintendent, how everything works. However, there's a lot of people in this county that's asking why is the school more? People more like it when there's less students. Now, I know how all that works out. As a superintendent, you know. But you're an average person on the street. If they see that you're down to five thousand. And we have three schools that are under a hundred and forty students. We have two schools that are under a hundred and seventy-five students. When I left here and went up to handle county work for a while, their policy up there is if you go under two hundred students, they automatically close the school without any rental income. And I just wanted to just say, there's a lot of talk out on the street about the request increasing in the number of students like that. I guess my question to you is, what would you, what would you respond to those people that ask that question? I guess my question to you is, what would you, what would you respond to those people that ask that question?
Well, my answer, very simply, would be, that would be a wonderful formula of making that ratio proportional if expenses weren't going up. But the reality is, is it costs more than it did before. And if we had fifty-seven hundred students, if we had seventy-five hundred students, we'd be asking for even more money. And so, it would be, wouldn't be a thirteen, fourteen million dollar request. It'd probably be an eighteen million dollar request. Because the electricity is more expensive than it was ten years ago. I mean, again, you, you kind of think, I, I use the, the parallel, the analogy of a family. My parents had a family of four and made about twenty thousand dollars years ago. Then they lost their two kids, and now there's about forty thousand now for that fam, same family because the cost of cars has gone up, the cost of groceries has gone up, the cost of the house has gone up, the cost of electricity's gone up. And even though there's less people living in that family, it costs more to run that same household with just my parents in it than it did in the eighties when my brother and I were both home when everything was cheaper. So, even though there's less people, as long as the expenses go up, it costs more money. Now, if my brother and I were still living there, it would cost even more money. And so, you know, the loss of ADMs allows us to keep this budget at this number. If we had two thousand more kids, it may be two million more.
Probably five board members. Tell you, drive up to Route Five, go to ten houses. Ask them without an explanation. Ask them if they understand why. I know tens won't say if they don't understand.
I feel like unless you have worked in a school or been on the school board, you're not gonna understand it. That's just typical because they don't understand how it works. Because it don't matter how many kids are in that school. It's gonna take the same amount of electricity, buses, teachers, you know. Yep, but, I mean, and they don't, you know, you might get ten new kids, but they don't come in packages of classes to make certain class sizes. You know, we know. But you're right, the average person don't know. But maybe when you get your marketing person, they can. They can make sure people understand.
And you said unless you worked in the school, there's a lot of school people that don't know it.
Right.
I, I got asked, back before COVID, back in twenty nineteen, to go speak to some third graders, and they wanted to ask me some questions. And one of the questions they asked me, they said, "How much money do you handle as a superintendent?" And I said, "Well, before I ask, answer that, I said, let me ask the three teachers sitting here, the three third-grade teachers, how much do y'all think that our, our budget is?" And one of them sat there for a minute, she thought, she said, "Million dollars." And then the other one said, "I'm betting it's two million." And the other one said, "One point five." And I said, "That doesn't pay for the teachers in this building. That, that, that doesn't pay for the, the bus drivers in this region." Um, no, you, you've got, I said, "We, we have power bills. We have power bills more than that." So, you know, so even our people can't understand what it costs to run. I mean, again, you, you know, in your house, you may get a two hundred dollar power bill for your house. And you, again, current expenses, power bills, of the square footage that we heat and cool every day in nineteen facilities that will, will hold ten thousand students. There may be only five thousand students there, not ten thousand students like in years past, but you're still heating and cooling the same square footage. And actually, we're probably heating and cooling a little bit more now than we were then because of Popper Springs. So, again, those costs are irrelevant of students when you're heating and cooling those amounts. It still takes the same number of maintenance guys and custodians to cut the grass on the grounds regardless. I mean, if ten kids leave the school, we don't cut less grass. It's still the same amount of gra, it's still the same number of floors that have to be waxed. It's still the same number of windows that need to be replaced. It's still the same number, those are irregardless of how many people are in the building. Those same expenses are still there.
Those are just fixed infrastructures.
Those are fixed infrastructure costs that do not change, but the costs have gone up.
Well, just a, a factor, two point one million dollars capital expense. About one facility less than twenty years old.
You want me to crank it up there?
Oh, no, I mean, you and I have fought this battle, but, I mean, let's face it. Our, we've got elementary schools that are seventy years old. I mean, they've already retired, we talked about voting and other things. I mean, now they're on social security, their generation acts. So, I mean, at some point, we either need to look at construction.
Sometime, at some point, some of those elementary schools are gonna have to be buried.
Yeah.
I mean, just like the lifespan of a person, but, I mean, they're, they're gonna have to be buried. And what we haven't brought in, in years and years is that new construction cost because we know that it will take away from this money to pay them back. And we're, and we've got ten more years of debt, nine, ten more years of debt on the books right now that we're working to get off before we can get into some of those big ticket items.
And either you build something back in the site where you buried that elementary school, or you have a building that's empty that the county's gotta manage or worry about, a private entity or a charter school scooping it up. Then that's just, you know, more competition.
Well, and, and the thing of closing the school, I mean, I believe Francisco was down to about sixty-five, seventy-five students. When that happened, you could reabsorb those into some other school. You know, Sandy Ridge is an older building. There's no other school that can hold those two hundred kids. And so, without going to school in a trailer park, with all the mobile units sitting around outside, which, you know, sounds really great until the storms start rolling through in the spring and the tornado warnings of your kids sitting in a trailer. And I know you've lived through those days as well. And, and we can't reuse, reuse in those same mobile units that were used fifteen, twenty years ago. They don't hold up like the Rick and Warner building did. So, there, I understand the question, and I, I explain those questions when they come up to me as well, and, and some people have an understanding afterwards, and some don't.
And I would say this. Talking about your marketing person, and Mike was talking about the website and everything that is putting out in House blogs.
Oh, my God, there's schools that everyone has been to.
Well, that's just the.
The most recent one that.
That's the one that hit the internet three days ago, and I was like, wow.
So, what I was doing was referring back to that.
Okay.
Anyway, the thing about this is, I think I would probably put out to the public some way why, what you just said.
Hang on, running. Mr. Neil Cobble. Did you give a word to Dr. Rice?
Mr. Bell.
All right. You have any questions, call.
Just about, that's all right. What Mike said, I'll go about exactly.
Oh, you gotta narrow down. I've been on a roll a couple of times. Wayne Barney Castle.
You do understand.
Yes, sir.
Because who controls the money? Our money is five commissioners. Mike, Eric, Andy, Sonia, Amy, the ones. Ask that question. But, um, as you've been in our shoes, you don't know.
Well, and I would just about say, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, Mr. Barney Castle, but I would say this has been an education for you this year.
I'll move down.
And before you were on the board and get all these numbers, I know before I hit the superintendent chair, I thought some numbers would be really easy. And then I get here and see the cost and effect of all of it, and I said, you know what, it's tougher than you think. I mean, I used to sit in a district and saw what the other district, well, why don't they just rest of, of the rate one percent? Well, it comes from somewhere. And so, while it's needed and while it's, you know, th, those are the tough, tough positions, but we do see all of those things, and, but everybody doesn't.
It's just like when I was in fire commission, you know, we'd be a couple of times, Rick, but it can't matter.
People looking at.
You know, this is two, three million dollars. And then when you come in here and you see forty-five million, something like that, it's all gonna be a hump for you. You talk about, you know, people talk about, you don't have, when the kids come out where I work, they started downsizing maintenance guys, and I kept telling them, look, wait a minute, whoa, the building ain't drawn up. It's still the same size it was, you know. You're still gonna have so many people to operate this thing. Well, that's the way it's still cost there. It's the same thing. The school, like where I work, it's the same concept.
I don't either. They're, they're probably taking out some of those maintenance people to reduce cost because their company costs are going up just like everything else. Just like Commissioner Nicholson, I bet his company cost, even if he does a little less business, your company costs are still going up.
All we want to talk about there right now is, you know, like you said.
Well, I said, that's the way it is with everybody, and every, every business is the same.
Exactly. Five percent we're talking about, you and our employees at five percent. You try to hire somebody. Try to hire them. Try to, a bus driver. But try to hire a maintenance employee, somebody working on some air conditioner. When a man can leave right here, I know what a guy looks makes because I looked it up. And I know what I make doing the same thing in a different county. Eighteen thousand dollars difference. That's a big difference, especially when the county I work in says how the thing says.
Neil, put your finger.
They said, they did the study, and the study came back and said we were all underpaid. All underpaid.
They said fifteen hundred, Neil.
Think about that. They need that five percent.
Well, if, if we had this crystal ball, and we just, all of a sudden, twenty-five percent of our schools go away. You think that's twenty-five percent of the cost? The only thing you're gonna absorb is two hundred, maybe two hundred fifty million dollars worth of debt.
Well, you need new schools, yeah.
You could cut out the teacher coaches. You can hire a lot of teacher coaches for two hundred fifty million dollars. But, I mean, a new high school, if you, you know, it's sixty to eighty.
Eighty.
Yeah.
More than that now. I mean, I'd say you're looking closer to a hundred now, building a reasonable-sized high school.
A, a high school with the athletic facilities is gonna be in between eighty and a hundred. Depending on, depending on what you want to put in there, if you want to make it look like a real school. And, and the reality is, we have to come down to, Mr. Morris, I'm gonna use your words that you used to me five, five years ago when, when I came here. And you said, "As a county, we need to look at, what is our minimum standard that we, when we want as a school district? What do we want for our children in this county?" The reality is, that's, and, and I don't mean this disrespectfully, that's a sorry, that's a sorry place to be. What is the minimum standard we want for our children? I don't want the minimum for my children. I don't want for our county to say, "We've got the minimum education around here." Talk about getting rid of population. There's, 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 people are not here for industry. People are not here for work. People are here for quality of life. That they feel good about where they live, they're, 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 they're in a safe area, they're in a beautiful area, and their kids are getting a quality education. And, and we've got kids that, that can go Ivy League. We've got kids that can learn trades. We've got kids that are learning all kind of stuff, and that's what I'm most proud of is. And, and I have people ask me at times, "Well, shouldn't you push the trades more? Shouldn't you push college more?" No, as superintendent, I want the opportunities for our kids to do whatever they want to do next. And I think that's what we need as our district. It's not a minimum standard, but what do we want for our children? Sometimes that costs money. And, you know, I'm not for raising taxes. I'm not for wasting money. But I also don't want, I don't want my kid going to a substandard school and getting less. And I think a lot of people in our county feel the same way.
Or riding or driving further because their community school, or, you know, it's been closed, or they no longer have one. So, that's also, you know, a big negative.
Just to clarify what he said, too, just so people don't think I was saying we need the minimum.
What, what commissioner? I will say, I will agree with that. He said, "What do we want as a minimum? We can't go below that. We need to look to go above that." And, and that's what he.
He would, he would elect you a lot more if he'd have led with that.
But that, that can't be the conversation is we're only gonna do the minimum. And, and that's not what he said. But what he was saying was, we can't go less than that for sure. With the, but what do we want for our kids?
I think what we were saying was, it, it has to at least be, I guess you have a minimum, you have a maximum. Like we said, Max and Burger, somebody's like, maybe what would be a maximum. It gotta at least be in the middle somewhere.
We have to be competitive.
How much above the middle are we gonna find? I wouldn't want to be below that.
I can tell you from my line of work that people will actually move from one side of town. They'll sell their house, or pack everything up, and they'll move to the other side of town just because it's a better school. Just so that their kids will have a better education. And they, they really pay attention to the, the ratings that the school has, how the schools perform, how they're funded. And, and I think that could, you know, that could have a big benefit in how we draw people to Stokes County. You know, our population is declining in, you know, not only in the schools, but also in our county as a whole. And I think the schools are kind of a reflection of how the, how the health of the county is. You know, if we, if we've got more industry moving into the county, and more jobs, and more people moving in, then our schools are gonna benefit from that, too. And that's, that's all, you know, we're all, we're all tied together, like it or not. And I think, you know, one thing we start with is getting our schools in better shape. You know, maybe it is building a new school. Maybe it is consolidating schools. That is something nobody wants to talk about, but I think at some point, we have to sit down and we have to have a plan. You know, if we just, if we just push it on down the road, and next year, the next year, then five years from now, we're gonna be sitting here with the same conversation. At some point, I think, as leaders of the county, we have to make those decisions, like it or not. You know, it's not gonna, we're not gonna be able to satisfy everybody in the county. But I remember when Dr. Rice first came, we were in our men's club meeting one day, and we were talking about it. And, and, you know, he, and he said then, "It's either, you know, we're gonna pay more taxes, or we're gonna consolidate some of the schools." You know, and he about got tarred and feathered and ran out of town before he ever, you know, got moved into his house because he was honest about what he was saying. You know, and I think as a, as a group of board members and commissioners both, then that's something that we have to look at. We have to be honest about it. I'd like to, I'd like to ask Commissioner Mendenhall, I mean, he's been in the school system, he's been on the commissioner's side of it now. What would be his recommendations as to how, how we go about that? That's what I'm saying. At some point, you know, we have to, we have to not worry about the politician's side of it. And we have to do what we're elected to do. We're elected to come in here, and we're elected to lead the county and be leaders, and not be, and not worry about what somebody's gonna think about us. Absolutely. I ask you all the time.
Well, you all say something on that. Ultimately, I think who made the decision on closing of Francisco was the Board of Education, am I correct, Miss Cox? The vote was made by the five members of the Board. Am I correct, Miss Smith?
After, after having people come from Raleigh and doing a study, doing a community effort, and lots of different things.
Well, again, sixty kids made that decision. Fifty kids. I mean, when there's.
One kindergarten.
When there's less than a hundred kids in the school, the decision's just about made for you.
That's not irrelevant. I think you're looking at a proactive decision. And that was a reactive decision.
Right.
And I think that's part of what our job is, is to be proactive.
Who did this, her?
And to look forward with it, and, and, you know, and it's not a, yeah, I mean, ultimately, I think it is a Board of Education's decision because we're the one that has to vote to, to do whatever we do. But at the same time, I think it's a, it's a, it's an effort with the Board of Commissioners and the Board, and the school board together, how are we gonna fund these changes? You know, how are we gonna, how are we gonna go about doing this? You know, what money is gonna be available to do it? And I think that's a proactive meeting or, or. And I think that's a proactive, uh, meeting or, or, uh, discussion that we do need to have and look forward and try to make our schools better and our county better and, uh, and, and really do what we're elected to do.
And Mr. Robinson, kinda in session on what you said right there. Dr. Rice, have you and your staff looked at anything like that, maybe consolidating schools and what their costs would be or what their cost savings would be, would offer more or have they been looked into?
Again, the, the cost savings i- is not a ton in, in this regard. The, the efficiency comes in, a- again, less combo classes. Because if you've got a hundred kids in a school, as Ms. Cox said, they're not coming in neat, neat, nice numbers of full class sizes. But you have, because of that, it causes more convo classes, it causes more teacher isolationism. It causes nurses coming one day a week to a school. Where if you consolidate and get it, it's still the same number of nurses, but it's, there were the same students five days a week, possibly. It's with those same number of, the teachers follow the school, the kids. So, but you have maybe three third grade classes in a bigger school where there's the collaboration there. Again, the, you, you, you save cutting a yard, but when you have all those extra kids in another building, the custodian's gonna come with the kids too. So that cost is gonna stay the same, you're still gonna flush the same number of toilets a day. It's whether the kids are in two buildings or one. But you do save heating and air, you do save some insurance costs. Uh, but in the grand scheme of things, that's not, that's not earth shattering numbers to close a school. Uh, I didn't see that in, looking back in the history of it, Mr. Mendenhall, and y'all can tell me, was, did we drop the tax rate because of we closed Francisco? Uh, not to my knowledge. Uh, I would say the next year, the budget request was higher, the year you closed Francisco than it was the previous year, just again because expenses go up. And so, but it's hard to put a definite number on what it would be, but because, again, as long as you got the kids, you serve them and they cost, cost money to do that. Uh, but it would save a little bit in insurance cost, it would save a little bit in, um, some of the electric cost, but not all of it because, again...
Pay off the new schools.
But then you're gonna be paying new schools or, or portable units, uh, mobile units to, to house them and educate them.
I don't think it makes sense to move from a, a, a building to a mobile unit.
No, no, again, within a day of school safety, there's so many units, a mobile unit today is not the feasible alternative that it was twenty years ago. Whether it's storms, whether it's school shootings, whether it's the security of it, the self-contained building is just a much better model than a mobile unit. Even though that used to be a cost effective, and, and again, if a building burnt down and we needed twenty mobile units to, to be able to serve kids immediately, yes, absolutely, we'd probably go that route to do that then, but we'd probably make sure we had two SROs guarding that property instead of, you know, one. So, you know, it, but there, there's, there's cost and benefit with all of it. Again, the, the main thing that I would say, and I think I said that day in the men's club meeting is, we can do one of two things, we can either increase funding to serve kids at a high quality in a less efficient manner, or we can consolidate schools and potentially lose customers from a school being three miles from their house to now being twenty miles from their house. They may choose another option which may even cost you again an ADM and all of that. The one thing I'm not gonna do with it is lead a school district is I'm committing to educating kids. I'm, I'm not gonna do a, a, I'm not gonna do that, I'll go somewhere else first. But I'm not gonna say that saving money is more important than educating our children in a quality matter. So we could either have the funds to do that, or we can consolidate schools and try something else to do that. But I'm committed to, to leading a quality education in Stokes County and I'm not gonna deviate from that.
I think it goes back to what we were saying a while ago, that parents do pay attention to those...
Absolutely.
Choices and, and, uh, the options that are available to educate their children. And they will move from one side of town to another side of town just to get to a better school. So that their kids will have a more opportunity.
Five years ago, I was offered two jobs in the same week. I chose Stokes County because of the quality of life in the school. I chose where I was gonna lead a school district based on what it meant for my family and my kids. And I believe I'm not alone in that, but I believe a lot of people choose where they live based on those things.
Small community schools.
It matters, it does matter.
Well, as the board member with the most recent graduate from Stokes County schools, I'll put the education we provide with anybody. We've got two that came through Stokes County schools. One's a Marshall scholar getting his masters in Oxford. The other one is in the top ten percent of hurt med school class at Wake Forest. Need one of them to take down one from undergraduate to graduate degrees. And both of them succeed and strive and excel with the Stokes County education at world renowned universities. I'm gonna pause, I just need strategic planning, strategic planning.
And it sounds like at the top of this is economic development and school marketing. Those things have to be very healthy, it sounds like.
I'm gonna go ahead and move on to item number three, we got two commissioners, I think it has meetings later on this afternoon. County manager's recommendation, Mr. Oakley.
Hey, I can, I can go on about this, we can just sit here and look and tell it to y'all a little bit more, but, uh, hey, I know y'all tired, so I'm gonna get quick, okay? And, and, uh, but you know, what I done and why I done what I done. First of all, I wanna introduce the member, I, I, you collect the board and I'll have her send out to y'all some people. Lynette, and you all, information's up, you'll be, you think, and you get information up here and she can take it. You know, the one thing I wanted to think about was this year, when, when, when you actually, I started, actually started looking at the school's budget was, when I looked at this technology and, and maintenance position and, and, and your coordinators and this MTS is, whatever that is, and the instructor coaches and the thing, these, I, I look at that like, you guys know what is needed in schools. And I'm not gonna sit here and say, you don't need this, you don't need this assistant, you don't need this grant writer, and you don't need this recital. That's his job. So you're telling me that's what he needs done. So, you know, I, I don't, I don't really look at cutting anything like that. But I did look at, uh, you know, the, the, the four percent to five percent and I said, you know, we went through a SRO's study, why would I not just settle our teachers? Because they belong to Stokes County. So I went that in there. And that's just a one percent increase from what you already got.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And then I, uh, also, uh, that, uh, what Tony's done to us and what does the school need to get things turned around and make people be more normal? And they love their schools and they love Stokes County and we're functioning and we're back the way it was. That's what I wanted to go to, that's what my prayer is. So I can, I, you know, I commend the school board, I commend Dr. Rice, I commend our teachers and their assistants. Ultimately, for everything they've done to make sure that our schools, and, 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 it's been through this process. That, that was just very difficult, I know it was, and thank y'all very much. But I'll let it all in now because I'm not the one to sit here and say that you don't need this. You're the, you're the experts and you work with these guys right here. I think y'all can come together on what needs to be. And as far as your capital, uh, uh, expense, uh, I, I looked at what your SRO, your feasibility study was done. Everything that was in that, that was said, uh, this roof need to be repaired, this tennis court need to be done, this track need to be done. It was in that study. Because I wanted to see first of all, what you had here. Was it there? And it was. And what was the priority to it now? When I look at the details side, that was just really confusing, okay? This, this, this study, but, uh, I did see the priorities and I can see why you prioritize some of, some of the issues, but, uh, with that, I done that, so now, let's go, where does the money come from? The money come from the actual revaluation we under, okay? To increase the amount of revenue that we would have if we leave the tax count, the tax rate along, okay? So with that increase, uh, of, of the thirty-one cent side of it and the increase, what we would have in our thirty-one cent side of it, which increased the revenues of about two million dollars. And then with the fund balance that we have here, based on that thirty-one cent tax rate that we do, which created a fund balance that we have here, that's, that's, that's your fund balance. That's why Rick said to me and saying, how many fund balances have we got in Wrayan? So it is confusing, it, so, uh, uh, with that and with the tax increase, Julia and I was able to meet your demand, okay? And with that, that's what we left there and, and we, we just gave you what you, what you requested because what I was looking at, I, I, it's already there. Dr. Rice, and, and in this study, and I agree with you, we got some of which I saw in the study, that you guys are gonna have to sit down and really go over and get together and decide what you're gonna do on this one. Um, with that, that's, that's why I gave you what it was. My prayers is, uh, for you guys, and y'all were able to do what, uh, is the thing. We have some personal, I can answer, that's the thing. There wasn't nothing special on my part, it was, you don't wanna give me this and I'll look at it and I'll say, here it is, and yes. It was, it's been there, it was straight up, what they asked for, what, and these studies and what's, what's serving it. What I, I look at is that, uh, cost is a cost of living of what we gotta have. Now, this revaluation comes every four years. We don't raise the tax rates around here for some reason. We keep the tax rates the same, but the cost of living still happens. And when you go every four years, before you have an adjustment on any kind of values based on what the economy is now. Do our math. These are the cost of livings that it needs to be added into it and then, you know, and now I'm gonna get our tax bill. Well, thank God I didn't pay it all four years up to nine. Now I gotta be adjusted. So it's, uh, I think it's just a cost of living impacted every four years that we need to be adjusted. Are we raising the tax rate based on what normal cost of living would be? So that's one way I hope that folks in the Stokes County would look at it. It's not, you know, you raised, you do the revaluation, just have fun. We're doing a revaluation, first, first of all, state mandates. Just because they, the reason why they do that is they mandate you have this done so you can stay oppressed and stay current with what the, the economy and cost of living is. Funds on there to make sure that you're able to fund what they are requesting, what our children and what our county needs. God bless you, man, I'm gonna tell you what, the county taxes is something that people needs to look at and realize that they're getting more out of that than they are anything if that was ever thought about doing. And they're getting more out of, out of that, you're staying on what I've thought about doing because we got our schools going, we got our EMS going, we got our fire department going, we got our DSS, we got our health department, we got our jails, we got our county. What you guys do with these, that's ter, that's tremendous, it really is, you have, uh, this in Stokes County gets more out of the county government than they ever thought about getting anywhere else. So we've gotta focus on making sure you have what you need. Because it makes your job very difficult to sit around here and beg somebody or something, so you're not gonna get it. But you need, you need to have the opportunity to be able to work together and know that you've got someone that's willing to listen to you and... I think that's what, I think that's what we have done. I think that's what we have done. But with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm done.
Questions or comments? All right, we'll move on to item number four, the joint board discussion, if there's any more discussion on this.
A quick follow-up question for Dr. Rice, uh, we're talking about the ALP, the, the rescue plan funding, something million, and then you, uh, my judge, I have seven more you could do if you had the money, whatever. Is that primarily capital stuff?
No, sir, it, it's a mixture, uh, yes, it's, well, it, it, yes, I mean, it's a mixture of, again, learning loss is a big part of that. Uh, again, we, the, the final testing numbers haven't come in yet, uh, and kids are in summer school recovering credits, but we've had more failures than ever before and so we're trying to get our kids called up from learning. Anything to correct that, whether that's extra summer school, whether that's tutoring, whether that's, again, additional Math One classes uh, for that, also, it, we're using that to refresh the phone books that we've, we've been using and it got, again, those phone books that went in at North Stokes, went in five years ago. Uh, anybody that's dealt with technology knows that they're on their last legs. So it's a replacement plan to help with that. It's also to help supplement the money for the, the, the smart boards. Uh, again, we're, we're looking at counselors because of the social emotional side of this. Most of y'all know Stokes County, unfortunately, is usually one of the top suicide rates in the state. Uh, we had, we had one month back during this school year where we had more kids at one high school that tried self-harm and they got COVID. And that's why I've been an advocate to get our kids back in school because they were suffering and they're still suffering. Uh, and so, again, trying to look at that social emotional health as well. And, and, and so it, it goes with a lot of things, but it has to be COVID related, yeah.
Off that money has a lot of strings attached to it. And so we have to go right by this, just like Dr. Rice.
Um, oh, this sheet, I'll pass these around to you, if you're gonna take one with a paper clip. This top one is, are the restrictions of the, the ESRS money that tells you what is an allowable expense and what is not allowed. Uh, all, some of that's restated what you've already got.
What does ESRS acronym stand for?
Oh goodness.
Um, never mind, tell them.
Don't you know what Google is? Something to do with MTSS and, uh, and USC, you know? Secondary schools, the education, but if you'll take one and pass it around to the, the other commissioners, there's, there's, there's one for every, yeah, uh, it tells, it'll let everybody see what the guidelines for ESRS two and ESRS three is.
I had a hard time trying to figure out where we're going with that.
How's about elementary, secondary recovery?
Elementary and secondary schools recovery act, maybe? Or just go with it.
Say it like you, like you know.
As long as, as long as Mr. Caldwell Googles it before he puts it in the paper. You know, I'm not, yeah, our board already has that information, but I just had that just in case for the front there.
Elementary and secondary school emergency relief.
Did you hear, say it again.
Yes, sir.
As they say on the internet, say it again louder for the ones in the back.
Elementary and secondary school emergency relief.
Because our school leaders, like national and local state leaders, say that the learning loss that our kids have suffered from the past year and a half will stick with, and they won't regain it in one year. What they, how far they've got behind, it could take up to ten years with their learning loss.
I think that's where they are starting to bring in more experts, more teachers, to try to catch up.
And that's what a lot of this funding is for, to help them catch up. Oh.
Way behind.
Okay, Louie, discussion, I have a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, I think I'll make that motion.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Me in the adjourn.
I need a motion to adjourn.
You got it.
All right, second, all those in favor? Thank y'all.